Okay, are we on? And now we have two council members here. We only need eight for a quorum. It's only five after ten. So wherever you are, show up. All right, it's ten after ten. We still have only two council members and need eight. Ah, three, we have three. Hernandez is here as well as Mr. Kowski. Seven we need for a quorum. Maybe some of you in the audience would like to fill the chairs if we could start the meeting. All right, it's ten fifteen and we have six council members. We need four for a quorum. Somewhere in this building, I know you are malingering. Maybe we should appoint some interim council members to fill the empty seats. We're up to seven. We need three more for a quorum. Mr. Burns is here. We need two more for a quorum. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven. Two more for a quorum. Ms. Chick, Mr. Holden, Mr. Padilla, Mr. Ridley Thomas, Mr. Wax. Where the hell are you? One more, are we? One more for a quorum. Ms. Chick, Mr. Holden, Mr. Ridley Thomas, Mr. Wax. Any one of you will be. All right, we're ready. Sit down, pay attention, we're ready to go. Hope we've got eleven. All right, good morning. This is the meeting of the Los Angeles City Council on Tuesday, January ninth, two thousand and one, and we are ready to start. Mr. Clark, call the roll.
Burns and Chick, Fuhr, Glanter, Hernandez, Holden, and Ms. Kowski, Pacheco, Padilla, Ridley Thomas, Warren, Wax, Walters, Faro, eleven members present and in quorum. Madam President.
All right, we are, the council meets on Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at what is loosely described as ten o'clock. We are being viewed on Channel thirty-five, the city's cable station. We are also available by council phone. There are fourteen of us because we have one vacancy and it takes ten of us to start the meeting. First item.
Approval of the minutes.
Without objection, the minutes are approved.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
And them too.
The invocation.
All right, we are ready, members of the council, if I can have your attention. I'd like to introduce Father Ritchie of the Saint Basil's Catholic Church for today's invocation.
Creator God, source of love and order, we praise you for the considerable measure of peace and prosperity of our city. We're now in a period of transitions more intense than usual. Elections just over, elections coming up, impossibly complex education issues, high pressure atmosphere around police reform, alliances realigning. Bless the work of this council. We need your help to keep our attention on the bottom line. We ask that as each member of the city council does the endless political and administrative detail work necessary to get anything of significance done. You help each member keep the health of the city and the welfare of the individual residents as the inspiration and goal of all action here. We ask your blessing on everyone in the city, but especially those who work full-time in service, administrators, police, firefighters, the whole list, that they be effective in their work and fulfilled by their work. Amen.
Now inadvertently demoted you, Monsignor Ritchie. I'd like to thank you for joining us this morning.
Yes.
Well, reinstate you now, yes. All right. Next item.
Before starting the regular agenda, there's a few items for housekeeping. Items number one, two, and eight, requests from the Building and Safety Department that these matters be received and filed.
All right, without objection, we're going to receive and file items one, two, and eight.
Items number, item number twenty-two, a request by Council District Six and the Los Angeles Housing Department to have this matter continued to January thirtieth.
Without objection, that's continued to the thirtieth.
Item number twenty-five, a request from Council District One, Los Angeles Housing Department, to continue this matter till February ninth.
All right, I just want to, we did have two people who wanted to be heard, so I want to make sure that Mr. Berkovitz and Mr. Goldflamm are aware that we're about to continue this item to February ninth. Do you have a problem with that?
No, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. That item's continued to February ninth.
Items number twenty-seven to thirty, on the regular agenda, the Los Angeles Housing Department recommends that these matters be remanded back to the Department Reap section.
All right, without objection, items twenty-seven through thirty will be referred back to housing.
Item number eleven on the regular agenda is the appointment of city officials. The appointment of Margy Johnson Reese as general manager of the Cultural Affairs Department.
Ms. Reese, we need you up in the front here, but probably not for very long. Please join us. Yes, she is. All right, hang on, Ms. Walters.
Very much, Madam President. Council members, it's my pleasure to introduce to the full council Mrs. Reese. I had an opportunity to meet with her yesterday and hear her in committee, and I am confident that she will make our Cultural Affairs Department and our cultural affairs in the city, the affairs of all of our constituents. And she comes to us from Dallas, Texas.
Well, we must like some people from Dallas, Texas.
So we're pleased to, I'm pleased to present her to you for confirmation today.
All right, anybody else? Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Thank you, you're confirmed, welcome aboard.
Thank you.
It'll be a real picnic, you'll love it.
Thank you, thank you, Mrs. Walters.
Okay, next item.
Items number three through seven and nine and ten are items noticed for public hearing.
All right, we have no cards on any of those. Does anybody in the audience want to be heard on items three through seven or nine or ten? Seeing none, the public hearings are closed. Members of the council, any specials? Three through seven, nine or ten, all right? Open the roll on those items. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Those are approved. Next.
Items number twelve through sixteen are ordinances. Do you wish to hold those on the desk?
Are we going to have a twelfth?
Yes.
All right, well, if Mr. Holden or Mr. Wax can make it in, we can do those items. In the meantime, we'll hold them. Mr. Holden's here, all right. Come on, Conrad, we're going to do them now.
Okay, items number twelve through twenty-one, twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-six, and thirty-one are items for which public hearings have not been held. A motion is required on item number sixteen.
Any specials, members of the council? Items twelve through thirty-one, with the exception of twenty-two, twenty-five, well, twelve through twenty, yes, thirty-one. Any specials? No specials. Open the roll on items twelve through twenty-one, twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-six, and thirty-one. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
That's got to be a record. Those are approved. All right, that brings us to the closed session, does it not?
No, item, the continuation agenda, items.
Oh, wait, 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 we needed a motion on item sixteen, hold on. Do we have two reports, is that what the problem is?
Yes, I believe they can both be adopted.
All right, Mr. Burnson moves on item sixteen, and we've already done that, right? Okay, you were about to say.
On the continuation agenda, items number thirty-four and thirty-five.
That's what I was missing. Okay, items thirty-four and thirty-five, I don't have any cards on those either. Members of the council? You moving it? Okay, items thirty-four and thirty-five, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Those are approved, forthwith on those. Okay, that, I believe, brings us to the closed session.
Brings you to items number thirty-two and thirty-three, which are closed session items. Do you wish to hear a public comment?
Let's do the public comment before then, and we'll also, if we have time, we'll housekeep. As soon as we get there, hang on, don't mess it up. All right, this is the time for a comment from members of the public on items not on today's agenda. If you wish to be heard, I need to have a card. At the moment, I have only one, Mr. Johnny Rotella. Come right up.
Good morning, folks. Happy New Year to all of you. I hope you've had a wonderful vacation, and my reason for coming this morning was to speak on the Boy Scouts. And I'm aware, and many of us are aware, of your eleven to zero vote with five absent, and it's one of the worst votes I think this council's ever voted for. I happen to be a parent, I have five children, six grandchildren, I never was a Boy Scout. I could have written a letter to the Daily News, but I decided to come down, out of my schedule, I'm a musician, songwriter, and come down and speak to you in person. And I think to start the new year right, I think you people should change your mind and revote this issue. I have here in front of me thirteen letters from people into the public forum. I don't even know them, you can have them if you want. Thirteen letters from people, everyone objecting to your vote. And you know what the Boy Scouts are, I know where they was. Last night I took out my encyclopedia and read up on them. I mean, this is an organization that started in nineteen-ten here in this country, and great people have been in it, and maybe you people have been in the Boy Scouts. I don't even know any of you as far as your childhood or how you grew up, what your parents did. But the move you made, eleven to nothing, not one person to object to what you did because of Jackie Goldberg, who says that she was a friend of the Scouts for thirty-five years, give me a break. I mean, we're not stupid out there. You people want our vote, you want us to vote for you when you run for office. You have people running here, I have Mike Fuhr running for city attorney, and whatever other people around here, he's my councilman. I mean, think about this, and make the year start out right, get rid of it. The kids have to have their value. People pay taxes, their parents pay taxes, like I do, like you do. So please change your mind and sit down with John Farrell, I know you're sitting in for him now. But I mean, this has to be done, somebody has to be a leader here and do something and overturn this. I don't know what else to say, I can't go on my knees and beg to you. You people are adults, you're making a good salary, do it, do a good job for us, and we're all waiting for something like this. And I thank you for your time, all of you.
Thank you, Mr. Rotella.
And I have, listen, I have nothing in my, I have, I have no, I'm not within the organization.
No, I understand.
And, and I'm an American. I was in the service, I am an American, and it means a lot to me. And you people have to fulfill that, you're my people.
If you'd like to leave the letters with the sergeant, he would pick those up.
Or Xerox them and whatever you want.
Whatever you prefer, either, if you want to hang on to them, you should probably just send us a copy and we'll put those in the box.
I'll do that, I'll send it to your office.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much. That closes the public comment, period. We're now ready to go into executive session, which means I have to ask those of you who are not a part of the executive session to leave, putting it bluntly. All right, we're back. What else do we have?
Motions for posting and referral.
Without objection, they are posted and referred.
Council members' request to be excused from council attendance. Councilmember Savonis request to be excused on February twenty-third for personal business meets policy.
Meets policy, we have to let them go.
And Councilmember Chick requests to be excused on January twenty-third to leave at eleven fifteen, and February seventh to arrive at ten thirty. Personal business and city business meets policy.
All right, those meet policy, those are approved. Did I hear you say you were going to break a quorum tomorrow? Okay, is that, is that a quorum? All right, we'll deal with that later. What else have we got?
The desk is clear.
All right, do we have any adjourning motions? Mr. Burnson? Would everybody please rise for adjourning motions? Who's got one? Mr. Hernandez?
Yes, Madam President, members of council, I ask that we adjourn in the name of Jacob Friedman. He worked for Western Union for fifty-one years and was one of their top troubleshooters. Basically, he was a good man, family-oriented, he owned racehorses for twelve years, and basically leaves behind two kids, Toby Rosen and Julius Friedman, seven grandchildren, five grandchildren, and was close to my legislative deputy, David Hirsch.
Anybody else? Mr. Ridley Thomas.
Madam President, members of the council, I request that we adjourn in memory of Eileen Woodson, long-term educator in the city of Los Angeles, retired from the principalship at Dublin Elementary School now, Tom Bradley Elementary School. Civically involved in a whole range of things, she didn't need to be called to duty, she just simply understood what needed to be done in the area of arts and music and in the area of civic involvement, the area of voting rights and civil rights. Eileen Woodson was a stand-up person and a long-term educator in our city. Her funeral service. Her funeral services will be held tomorrow at the home in United Methodist Church, where she was a member of longstanding.
Mrs. Walters?
I'd like to co-sponsor that.
And Mr. Wax as well.
She was also a commissioner of the city, a number of positions.
And on behalf of Mr. Ferraro, I'd like to ask that we adjourn in memory of Miriam F. Gray. She taught school at the L.A. Unified School District for ten years before becoming a full-time homemaker. She was involved in many philanthropic endeavors, including the March of Dimes, the Assistance League, the Cub Scouts, Oakmont League, and the Glendale Chapter of the Los Angeles Philharmonic and the Hollywood Bowl. She's survived by her husband Gordon and her two sons, Gordon Junior and Richard.
Second, Madam.
And I believe that's it. Call the roll. We are adjourned. Seven minutes to eleven.
All right, Madam President.
And we didn't start till almost twenty after.